To the Tuesday, February 16th, meeting of Half Moon Bay City Council. I would now like to call this meeting to order.
Llamar a orden a esta reunión.
And we will begin with our roll call.
Con el llamado de orden.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Arbat?
Here.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Here.
Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. And I would just also like to mention, for those who might be wondering, Councilmember Deborah Penrose will not be joining us this evening. Okay. So I would next like to call on Victor Hernandez, who will read a brief statement in Spanish. And it's announcing that we will now have live Spanish interpretation on our Zoom app, which will allow for much fuller participation for Spanish-speaking members of our community. So delighted that we've now added that ability to our Zoom call. So Victor, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Brownstone. Muy buenas noches a todos. Les quiero dejar saber que ahora tenemos una función de interpretación, de traducción, que les va a permitir reunirse en esta reunión y poder colaborar un poquito más inclusivamente. Si ustedes ven en el fondo de su pantalla que hay diferentes en su barra de trabajo, hay varios iconos, varios símbolos, y si ustedes van hacia la mano derecha, van a poder ver un símbolo donde dice "interpretación" y parece un mundo, un globito. Si ustedes hacen clic ahí, podrán ustedes elegir lo que es el canal de español para recibir toda la reunión del concejal de la ciudad de Half Moon Bay en español. Así es que una vez más, al fondo de la pantalla, en su barra de trabajo, vean el símbolo del mundo, hagan clic en ese símbolo y escojan el español para recibir la traducción en español. Muchas gracias.
And thank you, Victor. Greatly appreciated. Okay, we will now open our public forum, which is open to comments. And for those who are potentially participating for the first time, if you go into the participants on the bottom of your screen and click on that and click on there as an attendee, you will then see there's a symbol for raising your hand if you would like to participate. And you each have three minutes to speak. You'll get a 30-second warning after two and a half minutes that you only have 30 seconds left. Thank you. So we'll start the public forum.
Thanks. First, we have Mary Bernier. Mary, you have three minutes.
Seconds? Thirty seconds, I think.
Mary?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I am so sorry. Anybody listening who it's your first time, don't worry about messing up. They're very patient with us. Okay, I'm reading. Please protect the health of your people during this pandemic in a very special way. Publicize to all Half Moon Bay employers that if one of their workers has COVID and they are required to quarantine, as anybody would for two weeks if they've got it, the IRS will completely reimburse the employer in their next quarterly business tax if the employer pays their worker their regular salary for up to two weeks. We are at a greater risk of getting COVID when employees are forced to work when they're sick. Too many essential workers can't afford to take two weeks off without pay to quarantine if they have this disease. This law, it's now voluntary that the employer does it. It used to be mandatory until December 31st of last year. In talking to different people in congressional offices, there is a very a very sad chance that it is not going to become mandatory again before March 31st, which is when the whole voluntary act expires and the IRS will no longer reimburse the employer for paying their worker. So I was really grateful to hear from Joaquin that the people he's talked with, employers, that they're basically knowledgeable about this and are paying their workers if the workers need to quarantine. Unfortunately, I'm getting phone calls because I distribute these flyers every week at different places from people whose employers refuse to pay them. And what I was thinking is having a letter from the city that simply educates the employer that this law exists and that it is voluntary, but for the health of the whole community, it's better that the employer pays their worker and then they'll get the money back within those three months of when they put their quarterly business taxes in. And if for any reason that is difficult for them, there is a form they can fill out to get it almost immediately from the IRS. One of the problems is a few of the employers have actually called the Department of Labor because this particular law used to be under wages and hours division of the Department of Labor. And depending on who answers the phone, sometimes they'll just say, no, that law's expired. It's over. But if you spend two hours waiting on the phone to get through to somebody in the IRS, they'll very specifically tell you, oh, no, we'll still reimburse them with a tax credit. You know, they just need to subtract it from what they owe. Bye. Thank you. You guys are great. Love. Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Next, we have Rick Nahas. Rick, you have three minutes.
Thanks. My name is Rick Nahas. I live in Pacifica. I'd like to call to the council's attention that the 27 Bay Transit Operator Reports, like Sam Trans and Bart, have been meeting weekly since last summer to try to figure out how to act more like a Bay Area region and less like independent operators. Additionally, in the past year, about 20 nonprofit mobility and public transit advocacy groups have formed around the nonprofit Seamless Bay Area to endorse transit principles for seamless and equitable public transit in the Bay Area. I've made the same pitch at the Pacific City Council with positive council feedback. The 60,000 people living along the coast from Pacifica to Pescadero have no reasonable public transit services. Basically, we've been invisible. In order to gain visibility, perhaps the city council, the city council, might consider public discussion endorsement of the seven Seamless Transit Principles, which are: Run all Bay Area transit as one easy-to-use system. Put riders first. Make public transit equitable and accessible to all. Align transit prices to be simple, fair, and affordable. Connect effortlessly with other sustainable transportation. Plan communities and transportation together. Prioritize reforms to create a seamless network. The Bart Board has endorsed these principles, along with a small handful of cities. Public transit, for example, from Half Moon Bay to the Golden Gate Bridge, which is 30 miles, today takes about three hours and costs anywhere from $24 to $30 round trip. Seamless equitable fares based on zones or distance could mean that the round-trip adult fare might be $5 each way. And to support that fare, a Highway 1 corridor with limited stops between the Golden Gate Bridge and Pescadero might be considered as a test case. This actually was my message at the Joint MTC Board Integrated Fare Task Force meeting today. Just a little action and visibility can go a long way. Participating could result in a regular route along Highway 1, which expands mobility regionally to those who cannot drive for financial or health reasons. Expands the pool of available workforce to our small businesses and farms by making it more convenient to get to the coast. Encourages students at the four universities and colleges within two miles of Highway 1 corridor to take the bus. Allows more tourists to take the bus instead of a car to visit our beaches on warm weekends. I will email the council a transcript of my comments, along with links to Bay Area public transit content for your consideration. Thank you.
Rick, for your comments and keeping us in the loop on that. Appreciate it.
And next, we have Crystal Engate.
Hello. Thank you very much. I have all kudos to give. First, I would like to thank Veronica, who is a city staffer working on the food ordinance. I had a member who was a little concerned about how they were going to be able to make the change, and Veronica was just wonderful in connecting all the right pieces. So I just wanted to thank her for that and thank that team. Next, I wanted to let everybody know that we're having our annual awards next Thursday, the 25th, at 6:00 PM on Zoom. And we're going to celebrate 20 awesome local businesses who the public chose as frontline phenom and service superhero for making it through 2020 and jumping through all the hoops and shenanigans that came down the line. And it is open to the public, and tickets range from free to a beautiful wine bag. So please join us. We promise to make it fun, and the city's nominee as well. And then I would like to thank everybody who participated, including Mayor Brownstone and City Manager Bob Nesbit for our State of the Coast site that we had last week. We're receiving rave reviews, and people loved getting that information. So thank you very much. And then lastly, thank you for the awesome Economic Recovery Open House. Again, it was a wonderful event, and I've gotten so many heartfelt comments and kudos, and people really excited about this effort. So thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Thanks, Crystal. And next, we have Tony Serrano. Tony, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi. We can hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, good evening, councilmembers and City Mayor Brownstone. I just want to take some time and follow up on the conversation we had about the Yonera Serrano presented program. We did started. We had a good conversation. I want to, I want to thank you for starting the conversation on that program. But I think we can continue with that energy. And then I think we can still do more. So I just want to follow up with, with the city staff and also with the council members and see where is this program moving. I also want to thank the city staff on the wonderful things that you guys are doing in terms of the city, in terms of the COVID, COVID testing, rental assistance. So I think that we can continue working together to make Half Moon Bay a better place to work, to play, and to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate that.
There are no other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. That's it. That's it. All right, I will now close the public forum. And we are moving on to proclamations and presentations.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Sorry, I did get one more hand.
Oh, sorry. Stacy, okay, got it.
Stacy, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I'm a little bit late putting the little one down to sleep. I also just wanted to jump in and thank Matthew and Bob and Chief, Captain Lopez, for the conversations they've been openly having with coastside families taking action and our interest in the public safety work that's been kicked off. So we're anxiously looking forward to the city's update on that, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, where we are in the the focus groups, input, hearing from them, what their experiences are. And just want to add to Tony's comments. We're also very interested in seeing the Yonera Serrano presented program move forward. And thank you very much, everyone, for your attention to this important matter.
Thank you, Stacy. We're looking forward to the updates as well. And thanks for everyone who did participate in those feedback sessions. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, that should be it now.
That's it. So we're moving on to proclamations and presentations. And unfortunately, one of the presentations tonight was going to be from Hip Housing, a program update. And unfortunately, they're not available today. So instead, that update will take place at our March 2 meeting. Tonight, we then still have our update from, happy to say, from our MidCoast Community Council update.
Good evening. It's Claire Tootant with the MidCoast Community Council. I've got several things to mention tonight, but they're all pretty brief, and it's been a long time since I've seen you. First is Corey Park's bicycle pump track has a preferred design selected. They're putting it out to bid. They expect to have it finished and ready to ride on by the, by late summer, early fall of this year. So that's good. The, we, the council wrote a letter supporting the planning commission regarding the Harbor Village RV Park at Capistrano and Highway 1. The planning commission approved the park with conditions, including limiting the signage and reducing the number of slots. The Harbor, Harbor Village developer has appealed those conditions, wanting to go back to more slots and bigger signs. And we wrote a letter upholding the original planning commission decisions. That's pending. The Coastal Commission just approved a project for what they're calling Living Shoreline at the Pillar Point Harbor West Trail. This is a project which is, I think, relatively innovative, that's to protect the trail from erosion and to manage various problems that they've had there regarding wastewater and other issues. It's, the purpose is to stabilize the trail, so it's not going to be washing out as it has been. This is described as a cobble berm with rock fingers covered and backed by dredged sand. So there's a sandy beach, then behind that are vegetated back dunes. So it'll be interesting to see how this works out. It's something pretty innovative, instead of doing armoring or something like that. The fire station in El Granada is essentially completed. There's a lot of public outcry about its lighting. The lighting is very tall, on constantly, very bright, and of a color dimension, color wavelength that many people find objectionable. So we're working on that. Several agencies are actually working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to reach some kind of accommodation with them. There's some question about permitting, whether it actually allowed for this lighting or not. So that's being pursued. The biggest, most visible thing that we're dealing with is the Medio Bridge, which remains out. There's, as you know, the detour on Highway 1 that's protected with the, I guess it's K-rail or whatever that is. There's been a lot of visibility regarding this bridge. Many, many people in the community want it replaced as soon as possible, which everybody really wants. There are real problems with doing that. There are county plans which are, have been, I think, submitted to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission has the sole jurisdiction about whether and how the bridge will be replaced. There, various alternatives have been looked at. There's actually quite a number of alternatives. The county just completed an engineering study, which they sent to the Coastal Commission, saying that erosion will be negligible or stable, at least for at least forty years. We're concerned that the Coastal Commission may improve their plans based on the use of armoring and need for long-range planning to adapt to sea level rise. So we've written two letters on this topic, basically saying that if the Coastal Commission says that that's okay to build there, then we'll support it. But we mostly would like to have the county and any other relevant agencies develop some immediate projects to do, to do long-range planning, both for the coastal trail and for the Miramar area. If the bridge is completed in place as it has been, it should be finished at, like, in about a year. If it's required to be moved somewhere else, it will be quite a bit longer. So if there's any comments or questions on any of this, I'd be happy to respond.
Anybody from council have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Appreciate that update. And that will close our proclamations and presentations for the evening. I'll now move on to mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. And there's a few items that I would like to address this evening. First, the city, we would like, as a city, we'd like to respond to much of what you've been reading in the news about violence against the Asian community throughout the Bay Area. And I'd like to read a statement regarding our reaction to that as a community. In the past year, there have been thousands of documented and likely many more undocumented reports of racially motivated violence against Asian Americans. These violent encounters range from verbal harassment to physical assaults on elderly Asians throughout the Bay Area, including the recent murder of an Asian grandfather in San Francisco. Attacks against the Asian community are not new, and the pandemic has exacerbated the long history of anti-Asian rhetoric and xenophobia in our country. Whether race-based crimes or crimes of opportunity, we cannot allow these heinous acts to continue. As leaders in this community, we denounce the recent violent crimes perpetrated against the Asian community within the Bay Area nationally. And we stand in solidarity with the victims, their families, and all who have been affected by these horrific acts. I reflect back to statements made by the city council back in 2016, following the national election and in response to fear in our Latinx and immigrant communities. Those statements continue to reverberate as we support our Latinx community, Black Lives Matter movement, the Asian-American community, and all those who feel fear based on their culture, religion, sexual orientation, gender, age, disability, or immigration status. All residents of Half Moon Bay are part of our community. The city denounces any attempt to intimidate, threaten, or otherwise marginalize members of our community. We stand together with all in our community to support and assist those who may feel threatened. We pledge solidarity and assurance that our city is and will remain a welcoming, safe, and secure place for families to live and thrive together. The city of Half Moon Bay aspires to having zero tolerance of prejudice, racism, bigotry, hatred, bullying, and violence. The mayor, I, the mayor, council members, and city staff are committed to treating everyone with respect. We will not allow hateful acts to exist in our community. We call on the members of our community to continue our long tradition of acceptance and respect for all people in Half Moon Bay, to feel accepted and safe. And we asked that together, we commit to the following: that we commit to actively denouncing any attempt to intimidate, threaten, or otherwise marginalize members of our community. We commit to communicate and practice zero tolerance of prejudice, racism, bigotry, hatred, bullying, and violence. We commit to speak and act with respect for all persons. And we commit to working together to identify and to undertake actions in the near and longer term to address community members' needs for security and to help empower all residents to become confident and effective citizens and contributors to our own and our community's well-being. Thank you. And that includes that, our statement. Next, I would like to-
I just want to break in and say thank you very much, Robert. I completely agree with that.
Thank you, Harry. Appreciate it. I think we all agree with it. So as I can see, I have a shaking head with my fellow council members. So thank you for joining me in solidarity on that. Next, in community news, wanted to talk and speak to a very unfortunate event that many of us are aware of, but perhaps not all of us. And that is that unfortunately, on this past Friday evening, the Andriata Produce, the Andriatis family produce barn, which is a historical landmark, and it stood in Half Moon Bay for more than 100 years, was completely destroyed by fire. The Andriati Produce Barn, as many of us know, is a Half Moon Bay treasure. Both is a produce stand, a local business, and a beautiful building that evoked the best of Half Moon Bay's agricultural- Both is a produce stand, a local business and a beautiful building that evoke the best of Half Moon Bay's agricultural heritage. And our heart goes out to Dino and Terry and Frank and Dawn and their family members and friends and coworkers. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to read a statement from the Andriatis. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about how our city has responded quickly to helping out the family and the business. And then we are also joined by Dawn, who's a member of the family. And she'll come on after I talk about those things and I'll invite her to join us to update us share us a few things. So first, I'm going to read you the statement from the Andriatis family. Reads as follows. "We are extremely grateful for the outpouring of support we've experienced from the coastside community and even beyond after the loss of our historic family barn, farm stand and farming equipment. The sheer size of this response leaves us humbled and grateful for our many friends. The love we have received helps greatly to offset the shock and hurt from this fire. The process of rebuilding will take time because it's all pretty complicated with both the financial issues and required steps with the city. But city staff have been helpful and we have been and we have a strong supporting team. We want to reassure the community that we will be back in business very soon in temporary quarters on the golf driving range parking lot. And we are taking the first steps in replacing the barn. The first, the fire took the barn, but it didn't take our spirit. And we promise that we will be back." And certainly speaking for myself and the rest of the council and I imagine much of the community, we will fully be in support as soon as you've got temporary structure in place and we'll be happy to join you in the rebuilding. So I'm just to talk for a moment about what some of what the city has already been doing. First, I'll start with our public works staff. Upon hearing about the fire, city staff immediately showed up and were there to support fire suppression activities as needed and provided barricades and other resources to support firefighters. After the fire was out, public work staff helped secure the site and also installed drainage control along Kelly Avenue to protect stormwater quality as it flows from Kelly into the ocean. Our community development staff, upon hearing about this horrible event Friday night, reached out very quickly and established a team assigned to support permitting and to be readily available to the Androtis in anticipation that they might seek to rebuild quickly, which I believe that's their intention. Staff reached out to the Andriatis through their representative on Saturday morning, expressed support and sought information about if and how the Andriatis might want to move forward. Staff learned that yes, they would like to do so immediately. By Tuesday afternoon, that would be by this afternoon, in collaboration, in collaboration with the Andriatis representative, staff has determined a number of straightforward next steps that will support the Andriatis intent to keep their farm stand business going in temporary quarters at that driving range parking lot. And staff is also encouraged to learn that the Androtis envision a permanent, modernized replacement barn closer to its historic location. Speaking of historic, staff is also reaching out to our architectural historian to do something that probably should have been done years ago. The barn will be evaluated for eligibility as a sadly after the fact historic resource. Staff will keep City Council posted about the results of that assessment. So I'm very happy to talk about all those things that we've been able to quickly help the Andriati family and help restore historic business that we're very proud of. And with that, I would like to invite Dawn, I believe she, Dawn Dilman, to join us and let us know what's going on. Dawn, thank you for joining us.
Hi there, and thank you so much for having me, joining me as well as Ms. Terry. And the first thing that we want to say is that we're just completely overwhelmed and awestruck by the response of our amazing community. All of us have grown up here and raised our families here and we're raising another generation on the farm. And a loss like this could be something in a normal time or any situation that could just devastate and completely put a stop to a generational farm. But because we live in this community and we have this team and these neighbors and patrons and friends and family, we know we're not alone. And it has just bolstered bolstered our resolve to do everything that we can, pull up our bootstraps and dig back in and start again with something new that clearly with the support of our community and our city, we really hope that this barn and structure is actually going to be much deeper felt in the community because we do intend to invite everyone who's interested to help in the cleanup and the rebuild. And it's incredibly important to us that the community understands how much it means to us to be valued as a landmark in the community. We, I, I just am ever so grateful and I know that Ms. Terry would like to say something as well.
Yeah. Hi Debbie. Thanks for all your support and coming in and supporting me when I'm in the barn crying about things, but yeah, we're just not here for, you know, when we, when the COVID started, I was never thinking I was going to be home seven days a week since March, but I was there every day. I was getting tired and I was getting a little crabby because I wasn't getting my taxes done, but you know, when this happened the other night, I, I was in shock. I was shaking. I didn't, it didn't hit me till the next day when everybody started coming around to the driving range and bringing flowers and cards and talking about the old times when they were, their kids were small and I was ready to give up that night because I go, maybe it's a sign saying, hey, we should just give up. But after everybody started coming and talking and, and saying how they, like I said before, their kids were small and people from all over, I was getting calls, people from the valley, people that park it, go to the RV park and camp, people that golf that come from all over the place. People are just giving me nickels and dimes and hoping we never quit. And I says, I would never quit. And the next door, people saying the nicest things. And the fire department, they were right there. I called, I think I was the second person to call the nine one one call. It happened so quick. I looked out the window, the fire was just starting up the wall in the front and then 10 minutes, that whole barn was up. It's over 150 years old. I have a picture in my driving range. It's 1924. And that barn sit, you could see the barn in the background. What it focuses from the mountains to the ocean. And when I first married Dino in seventy-three, I always asked to his dad, who built the barn? How old's the barn? He always said Columbus did. So it was old then. So when it went up in flames, that wood was so brittle. And again, there was nine, nine different fire departments that came. There were thirty-seven firefighters. That, that fire was from eight o'clock. They had it contained, so it wouldn't burn, you know, on any other houses, but it kept running from eight o'clock before in the morning. And the police, I mean, the fire department did not leave. They came over and you know, consulted with us and everybody was just supportive, the neighbors, flowers, everybody. And and I'm glad none of, no one got hurt.
We're so thankful as well to the fire department for being able to contain so quickly because it's devastation for us, but it just could have been so, so much worse. So we're so thankful and it's a real testament to the teams that are out there and responding around us.
Like I said before, the, the barn might be gone. I ordered all my boxes. I need to continue farming. There's still a lot of crops that we have to pick out there like broccoli, cauliflower and cabbage. And so we will put the temporary onions up and then the horse onions later, a little permanent structure so they don't blow in the wind, but I'll watch for sure. I'll watch the weather. If it's gonna be windy, I won't, I won't be selling. I'll make sure it's safe for everyone. And yeah, so I, I feel like I, I, you know, we'll never end. We're never gonna finish. I didn't, I didn't buy the property back from open space just to hide under a rock. We're not in it for the money. We're in it for the community. And like I said before, this half, our backyard is Half Moon Bay's big garden. If there was ever any tragic where you couldn't get your food, don't worry, we always have food for everyone. And that's what people have to do, think about each other and work together and not fight with each other. And that's my thought. And again, thank you for letting us be on your, your, it's called Scope or Scoop or whatever. Zoom. And anyway, this is my first time and I'm not, I can only turn the computer on. I don't do anything else. But again, thanks for listening to us. And I want to thank my insurance agent to being out there so fast. And again, for Steve Wilson, he got the call. He called me at a quarter to nine yard. He knew I was needed my help. He came right to my side and got the city involved. And, and again, I hope, I know we're gonna work together. We're not gonna argue. We're gonna just make it work. And, and again, thank you for helping us out.
And also Matt Chittister was on the phone to me before the fire had even been contained. You know, it's again, we are so thankful to be part of this community and we're so appreciative of all the support and ways that people are leveraging what they can do and reaching out and, and helping us. We look forward to having you back and the pumpkins and the sunflowers are definitely not affected by this. So we will still have some traditions to be had this year for sure.
I'm glad to hear it. And Terry and Dawn, thank you so much for joining us this evening. And again, terribly sorry for your loss, but know that we have your back. This community has your back and
We feel it. Thank you.
And please keep us posted. If there's opportunities for volunteer-
Absolutely, absolutely.
You can help with communicating that. And I know you have a website, but we can help amplify some of that communication.
I'll be sure to do that.
And we will be there for your barn raising, both literally, figuratively. That's what a community does. That's that's what it means. Communities used to all come together and help people raise their barns. So
Well, I will look forward to hosting something fantastic for the city in that new barn.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. I love you.
She loves you too. She just said I-
I know, I read her notes.
Thanks again. Okay. So we're gonna move on. Thanks, everyone. I am going to turn this over to our city attorney, Catherine. Are there any reports out from me, some closed session meetings?
No, nothing to report out. The council has not met in closed session since my last report.
Thank you. Next up is our city managers' updates, which includes a number of items. I'll turn it over to you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In addition to the three that are listed on the agenda, our bi-weekly COVID update, a couple of updates from Public Works on two big projects that are in the construction phase. Public Works will also do a short update on the completion of some work at the Ted Adcock Center. And then finally, we do have a announcement for our upcoming listening session. So with that, I turn it over to Matthew.
Thanks, Bob, and good to be with you tonight, council. I'll provide a very quick update. Glad we can provide up-to-date information every couple of weeks to you and to the community. Next slide, please. So testing does continue every Monday night from three to six PM at the Ted Adcock, and you can register there at the site on the screen. Currently, you can only sign up for next Monday. We've gotten confirmation from the county today that they will continue allowing us to test here on the coast for the foreseeable future. So keep an eye out for registration dates and times in March. And same Thursday mornings at Senior Coast Siders from nine to 11 AM for anyone fifty-five and older and their caregivers. And I'll also just say, if, if you have a business or a group of people that is struggling to get testing during the offered times, please reach out to me. We will work with you to find a way to get testing to you. We know that's an important part of the response to COVID and keeping everybody safe. And we want to make sure that we, we identify and overcome any barriers anybody has. So please feel free to reach out to me if you, if you need assistance in getting testing at, at a different time. Next slide, please. Vaccinations are really starting to ramp up, and I think we've heard a lot of exciting news recently about this. We encourage folks to go to smchealth.org coronavirus health data to see the dashboard and to get a better understanding of what's going on in the community. As of Friday, a hundred and forty-seven thousand individuals in our community had received at least the first vaccination shot. That's thirty-four percent of what we need to get to ninety percent of adults in the community, adult residents in the community, which the county believes will put us in a good position to overcome this pandemic. Of those hundred and forty-seven thousand individuals that have received vaccinations, thirty-seven thousand have received both shots and have completed their series of vaccination shots. So that's great news. And, and just a reminder, the county continues to follow the state and federal priority guidelines for administering vaccinations. Next slide, please. So this is an updated graphic to help folks understand who's eligible and how many people that is. So in Phase 1A, which has been going since the beginning of the year and I think even late 2020, it includes healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities. In San Mateo County, that's about 50,000 people. And so they continue to make progress in serving this population. Healthcare workers are getting vaccinated through their healthcare providers, their employers and through the county. And long-term care residents are receiving onsite care through partnerships with many of the pharmacy providers here in San Mateo County. So that's been going really well. Phase 1B opened up several weeks ago, and at this point, we, it includes anyone sixty-five and up, which includes about a hundred and twenty-five thousand members of our community. And as of, I believe, next Monday will include essential workers, first responders, food and agricultural workers and teachers and school staff, which I think everybody's excited about. I think that helps us get into a better position, hopefully to reopen schools and get our kids back to school. And then, of course, following these groups, the vaccinations will become available to wider numbers of folks. And hopefully over the next several months, people have the opportunity to get vaccinated. Next slide, please. So I'll, I'll remind you, the best way to get vaccinated is first and foremost to contact your healthcare or primary care provider. The major healthcare providers in the region Kaiser, Sutter, Pampf, Aetna and Seton have all been receiving large numbers of vaccination doses, not enough to keep up with demand, but still a, a large number going to them. And you should work with your doctor or your insurance provider to get an appointment and get vaccinated. To better understand your eligibility, you can go to the email or the website address there on the screen. There's a link there that allows you to sign up for notifications. The state has also launched its My Turn website, which allows you to do the same thing. I encourage folks to sign up for both. You'll, you'll be notified of the most opportunities for vaccination by registering at both sites. The county vaccine website is a great place to go for up-to-date information on what's going on. And the state COVID website also listed there will provide great information. As a reminder, the vaccine is a great tool to protect yourself from contracting or experiencing severe symptoms of COVID-19, but they're unsure- But they're unsure of whether or not it prevents you from being a carrier. And so even after you've been vaccinated, we, we strongly encourage folks to continue doing what we've been doing to keep yourself, your family and those around you safe. Social distancing, no large gatherings, wear a mask. Uh, the, the sooner we get vaccinated and people continue to take those actions, the sooner we will be through this pandemic. Next slide, please. I think the big news that most people know about is the county has been able to open a mass vaccination site for anyone sixty-five and up. Uh, it's been ho- held at the airport. Hopefully you've received, uh, an email, a posting on Nextdoor, something to get you directed. Um, it continues tomorrow and Friday, and there are still appointments available. You can register at the URL, uh, listed on the screen. Uh, if you need help, you can call six five zero two six three one eight six seven. Uh, the county indicates the wait times may be long, but, uh, if you're having trouble accessing the website or registering online, that is the, the best way to get support. Uh, you can also email vaccine-sm-support@carbonhealth.com. Carbon Health is a third-party, uh, business that is helping to provide all the registration, uh, through the county for vaccinations. The good news is, as I contacted folks in the community over the weekend, that I knew were struggling to get vaccinated. They knew about this. They were registered for it. And, and hopefully some of them were vaccinated even today. So, uh, keep, keep listening. We'll, we'll keep providing more information. I can also say that the county has beta-tested doing a vaccination site outside of one of its clinics. Uh, they're taking what they've learned from that and plan to go out to its other clinics, including, uh, the Coastside Clinic. Uh, we don't know when, uh, but we will obviously try to play a role in that to help support it and make sure it goes well and keep the community posted as that opportunity, uh, here on the coast becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Uh, were there any just follow-up questions from council members on what Matthew presented? If I could see everyone. Okay. All right, uh, next, um, we will have a presentation on the Ocean Colony Pump Station. Enforcement project update, which I believe, um, Maz will be presenting. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Maz. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, so tonight I'm gonna be giving a, an update on a couple of our projects, um, that are in progress. And the first one up is the Ocean Colony Pump Station Enforcement Project. Next slide, please. All right, so just a little project background. These, this, uh, pump station enforcement serves, uh, the golf course and Ocean Colony subdivision. And it's, it's run into life, um, since it was installed. The project is replacing the pump station itself as well as the force main and making some important updates to the system. Project has been moving forward, um, with, uh, approval in May of last year with the construction contract and budget as well. And then the construction actually started in July. Uh, we've been having several important meetings with stakeholders, uh, Ocean Colony, homeowners association representatives, as well as the golf links. And we're looking at, uh, project completion in the early summer. I have some pictures I'm gonna share with you folks of some of our pro, some of our progress that we've been doing overall. And I'm happy to answer questions. Next slide, please. All right, so here's, here's the project limits. Um, so this is a quick aerial with some, um, apologies for some of the lines, but, over here, we've got the, the, overall, we have the, uh, pump station that's close to the pro shop over in Ocean Colony. Um, and the, uh, pump station over there will be replaced. And then the red line depicts where the force main itself is within, um, different parts of the city streets as well as, um, through different portions of the, uh, golf course itself. Uh, next slide, please. Here we have some photos of, uh, some of the pipes that have been, been placed. So as you can see, we've got the top left corner, there's, is a picture of one of the pipes. Um, it's a ten-inch PVC, line for the force main. It's about, uh, the project will be placing about twelve, twenty-five hundred feet of this, uh, material. Uh, we had a good and large amount of these pipes that were actually brought to the site in advance of the, of that, phase of the construction. In the bottom left, um, you can see we were, uh, able to work out something with, uh, the golf links to provide for a staging area where a lot of, a lot of our materials and some of our equipment was staged, uh, close to the project site. On the right side is a picture of, uh, one of the street segments that, uh, that, that was saw cut. So what the contractor would do is go through there and actually saw cut the edges of the asphalt where the pipe is going to be, uh, placed. And that allows us to have a clean edge for the asphalt. And so that, as that material's removed and some of the, the ground materials removed, you get to the, uh, the area where the, the pipe bedding is placed. That, that kind of goes back to the picture on the top left. And, and it kind of builds back up that way. So that, that's what that picture depicts. And it's, uh, it's a good way for us to be able to control how much of that pavement's removed as part of the project. Uh, next slide, please. All right, here, um, you can see where, uh, some of our pipe fittings, um, are, are shown in the top left picture. So it's really important for, uh, sanitary sewer lines, especially force mains that are gonna be working under a lot of pressure to have the proper fittings, uh, placed in the testing, appropriate testing done to make sure that, um, it's a tight seal, um, for the longevity of the pipeline. And it's very important, the number of bends and the degrees are very calculated as far as how many could be made in these types of systems. Having too many bends and too many, and improper fittings would cause clogs, um, and, and backups, which, obviously we're trying to avoid, which is one of the main reasons we're doing this project. On the right side, you can see a picture. That's, um, so the pipe that was, uh, that seen previously, so that material, um, is, uh, is a, uh, P gravel that's placed, um, on top of it. It is a structural material that allows for the pipe to be, um, covered. And then, uh, beyond that, um, they, they will replace the backfill all the way to the top and, and finish up the pavement. So here the contractor has a tape down measuring the distance between the top of the pavement section and where the, where that, that pipe bedding is. Um, on the bottom left is just, it's just a pic, a good picture of, of the operation overall and, you know, how big it is. So the, the way that they, the method that they do this is they, they open up the trench, um, for a good segment at a time, about a hundred to two hundred feet at a time. And they put these temporary plates, plates in place as they're going through and doing this, uh, doing the work. And it's, it's a mobile operation, um, in order to be able to play the pipe. Really hard to be able to go and complete one segment, place one piece of pipe. So, you know, these phases are done in portions. So it's important. Traffic control is really important and the safety equipment that they put on site, like the plates are really important in order to be able to achieve this project and still provide access to residents because all of the streets were open during the course of the project. And they will remain open for most, for the majority of it. Next slide, please. Another, um, big element for this project was the crossing. The street had its own challenges with vehicles and, and traffic and, and, you know, access to, uh, individual, um, driveways. The crossing the fairway had its own challenges. Um, for the majority of the time, our contractor was working while, uh, the golf course was operating. Uh, there was a good, uh, period where we were, we were actually able to, uh, work with, um, golf links, maintenance staff. And it was actually fantastic when they were doing the aeration of their fields. Our contractor was granted access to go through and do a lot of the trenching work and get it prepped for, um, the actual pipeline. That sped up a lot of time, um, being able to work, uh, without the, the worry of, um, you know, uh, golfers going through the area. So that, so you can see here, a lot of the same, um, methods, um, are, are required. A little bit different. Obviously, we want to protect the grass as much as we possibly could. So there was a lot of plywood and, and plastic placed down to try to spread the load out of the tractor. You see the top left corner. Of the backhoe, sorry. As well as, um, the construction orange fencing to try to highlight where the work was being, taking place and keep people, uh, people away. The golf league staff were very, um, supportive in this project. They have been very supportive, um, for the duration of the project. Even before we started construction, uh, meeting with staff. So we do appreciate, um, the, the work that, and the coordination that they've been providing the city for this, for this project to be successful. Um, so, so obviously the restoration here is gonna be a little different. At this point for this project, once the, the segment of the project, once the pipes, uh, completed, then, uh, it gets restored with, grass, uh, for the, for the fairways. Next slide, please. Uh, the last piece of this project, um, is, is going to be the pump station itself. This one, eh, this pump station is nestled, uh, between the residential, um, the beginning of the residential properties on Ocean Colony. And just off the picture here, um, on the left, um, it's close to the gate that is, uh, adjacent to the Mullins Pro Shop and, um, and restaurant. So, um, so this will be the, now, the one of the last phases of the project. We are going to be doing, um, quite a bit of, uh, work. Some of the preliminary grading has been completed, um, in this area. We've done a lot of pot-holing, as you can see with the markings, um, here where we've identified, uh, the utilities that are existing on site. One of the, this will be one of the last things to be done, partly because, um, it, it, it's much simpler to get the, the pipe, uh, sequen, for the sequence of the construction. It's easier to get the pipe in place first, um, have that system ready to go. And then have the pump station, uh, be the last piece, uh, order. Given that everything's pretty much ready to go from that point. We also had a little bit of a delay. There's a lot of, um, electronic and mechanical equipment that's part of this, the pumps itself. The SCADA system, which, um, SCADA stands for, I had to look this up. I, I, I don't memorize the, a lot of these acronyms. Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. So this will give us, um, this will give the city and SAM staff alarms when there's any issues at the pump station. Also gives us some, um, controls into the system, given that we're gonna have new equipment that's up to date and up to current standards. Um, so yeah, so this will be the last portion of the project as we're waiting on some of the last of the equipment to arrive. But we've going to, we're going to be, we're, we're looking at completing construction on this project in the next few months. We anticipated early summer, as long as all the equipment and everything comes through. And I think that's the last slide on this project. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Maz. Um, any questions from council members?
Just wanna say it's great that it's, uh, that we're closing in on the end. It's been, uh, long in planning, so it's a, it's a much-needed project.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, I also, I, I did forget to, I thanked a couple of people. I, I just, I do wanna thank, um, again, the golf league staff, uh, Ocean Colony residents, as well as the HOA staff. As well as, um, our city staff, there's been a lot of, uh, support through the entitlements from community development, from our engineering staff and public works, maintenance staff, um, um, the logistics of the, of the project. And, um, our project manager Denise Hutton, who's been working on this thing, um, since the beginning, since its inception. I wanna thank all of them very much.
Thank you, Maz. And I would also, um, like to second your, um, thank, thanking Ocean Colony for working with us on this. It's a huge project and allowing us for it to go onto their property and help this get done as efficiently and quickly as possible. And, um, you know, talking about sewers, it's not a sexy topic, but you know, I think communities, uh, I'm pretty grateful knowing that, you know, this is a town where we, uh, we're pretty diligent about upkeeping our sewer system. And, you know, we all know the repercussions of, um, bad sewer leaks. And, um, I just think we're very proactive in this particular area. And that's why I'm one of those weird folks who really love seeing these presentations. Seeing how it's done and, uh, see, you can see those curves. You wanna make sure that's done right, that's for sure. So yeah, thank you. Appreciate your expertise and giving us a good report on that. Appreciate that. Let's see, our next presentation is Highway One South Safety, South Safety. Highway One South Safety Project Update. Welcome Maz again to, uh, do that presentation for us. Thank you, Maz.
Absolutely. Uh, my pleasure, um, to be here on this project as well. We've, as you can see, we have, we've had two major construction projects going on simultaneously. Sometimes that's how it works out. And, um, again, with, um, that support of all the staff that has been working on this project, I'm happy to be here to be, uh, presenting this to you. Can I go to the next slide, please? So a little project background. Um, this project, uh, was approved by our city, by, by our city council in July of last year. Again, this, this project has been actually on our books since about twenty-twelve. When I will look back at the history of the project, um, when we broke, uh, and we did break ground this past October, which was an amazing achievement in itself. Couple of the highlights is that, you know, I wanted to highlight is that our, our friends at the San Mateo County Transit Authority have been very supportive of this project, uh, through their funding and, and, uh, the majority of our funding, three point six million of it came from the, from a measuring grant from the SMCTA, um, which makes up our overall four million budget. So only four hundred thousand dollars from the city's, uh, funds. Um, and again, uh, we're, we're about fifty percent done with the project, believe it or not. A lot of the underground work has been, um, completed. Um, and I have some pictures that I would love to sh- show and walk you folks, walk everybody through a little bit more detail. But, you know, be- believe it or not, we're fifty percent through. And, um, this project, we're looking at wrapping it up towards the, uh, I think the end of the summer with some of our, our lead items, um, that I'll talk a little bit more about. But it's been going great so far. Next slide, please. All right, so one of the bigger, one of the biggest pieces of this project was, uh, some of the underground utility work that was done. Although it, it seems very minor in scope, a lot of effort goes into place when you take overhead lines and underground them. You have a lot of utility agencies that you work with. In this particular one, we had AT&amp;T Comcast and P G E all, um, overhead, on overhead poles. And, uh, part of the work was to underground that constru-, uh, underground that. And, um, I'm happy to report that, um, the underground utilities, utilities have been undergrounded finally. The overhead lines on Highway One have been completed and, and undergrounded, which, um, takes a lot of coordination and effort from a lot of folks. But, um, happy to report that that piece has been finally completed. And as well as a lot of our other underground work. So there's some storm drain work and some conduits and, um, all the things that go into place for the, a, a traffic signal and, uh, new curbs and gutters and sidewalks, um, that people don't see, obviously, when you're working, when you're walking on the surface. But all these things go into, um, to make the, um, to make it enjoyable, to make it safe in order to make sure that we are not flooding our intersections, um, and, and walkways. And are, and are making sure that all of the, um, utilities are in the, in, in the correct space and can be accessed in case of emergencies. And so many different pieces. So, um, that's where the fifty percent of it went, is there's a lot of work that just isn't seen, uh, by the naked eye. When you, when you, when you see the finished product. Next page, next slide, please. So I mentioned, um, some of the conduit work. So you, you can see here on the, on the left side, that is a, uh, image of the foundation structure for a new traffic signal. So they put these large, uh, what they call sawno tubes, um, these cardboard tubes in, to protect, uh, the, um, the excavation that they've made. They put a rebar cage inside those things. There, um, they can be, it can be smaller. This is one of the smaller ones. Some of the larger signals can be as, uh, each, each foundation can be as wide as three feet and as deep as twelve feet. And that's all steel and concrete. So it's, um, pretty, pretty large. Piece, part of the construction. And again, really important to make sure we put it in place, uh, in the correct location the first time. So we don't have to move it, because it doesn't move very often after it's in place. Um, so you can see on the right side where, um, the contractor was staking a lot of the locations. You, uh, the pipes you see sticking out of the ground are the underground pipes that they were placed, uh, prior to, prior to the signals actually being, uh, foundations and signals being placed. It's hard to see here, but I, when, when we show you the finished product, I'll get the same angle. On the, by, on the right side, you can see where the tubes stick out. Those are the pork chop islands of, uh, of, of a crossing. And so it's hard to tell here, but each, each location where those, uh, pipes are sticking out, there, there will be a push button or a signal or some sort of, uh, electronic feature, whether, whether it's a pedestrian, um, walk, don't walk sign. It'll all come together as, as, um, the construction moves up above ground. Um, so here you can see the contractor was laying out the locations and they were staking actually the, where the, uh, back of, back of sidewalk and, and sidewalk is. Next slide, please. This one, this is for the monument signs. So that as part of this project, we're, we're putting these large, these gateway signs into our historic downtown. At its highest, they will be eight feet, eight feet tall. They're crescent moon shape and they taper down into, into the, into the ground elevation. And again, it was designed to mimic our landscape in the background of the rolling hills and, and some of our, and our, in our bluffs. So with that theme, their contractor is placing the wood forms that are placed prior to the steel and the concrete are poured for the, for the sign. And they've been, a lot of work goes into, goes into this portion of it. As they play, as they put all this in, the actual concrete pours take a fraction of the time that it does to put the forms into place. They have to make sure it's all in the right location, that the curvature, especially for something like this, the curvature is appropriate meets our design standards. And a lot of inspection and time goes into it to make sure that the ground underneath the sign structure is compacted to the proper 95% compaction. So that there's no future issues and failures down there. So a lot of, a lot of detailed work goes into place when they're, when they're doing this portion of the work and the contractor is, at this stage, they're getting very close. So the forms are actually been ongoing for the last couple of days. And they're looking up to actually pour this, these concrete structures Thursday for the footings. So we'll start seeing that go up before you know it. Next slide, please. Another important portion of this project was the detours during the construction. And originally the Caltrans required a different type of lane closure and detour configuration that we have out there today. In the, on the left is a quick aerial image where we, where it shows Main Street at the top of the page and Higgins Canyon Road where it meets up Highway One. Originally we had through traffic at this intersection. Even after many pleaded myself and engineering staff, as well as others in the city with Caltrans to allow us to make some of these changes. After a couple of incidents, we finally, they finally relented and allowed us to make the changes that we saw fit and close that intersection down to through traffic for the duration of the project. In addition, it was brought to our attention by some residents about the challenges of cyclists going through this corridor. And we, what we were able to do were a couple of things. The one, one great thing was our maintenance crew were able to purchase and correct this sign that you see on the, on the right side. We have a large changeable message sign that's about six feet wide that, that we were able to purchase and utilize as part of this project as well as for future traffic and safety needs. It'll be something, it'll be a piece of equipment that we'll be able to utilize moving forward. But this was placed in, in advance of a, a cycle lane. So with, with the comments from the community, we recognized that this particular segment did not have a safe pathway for cyclists trying to traverse this corridor with, especially with Main Street being closed off to access now. And so for the duration, for this portion of the, of the project, during this duration, we were able to take one of the lanes of vehicular traffic and continue and have a bike lane until we, until the, until we catch Seymour. Where cyclists could go and cut back over to Main Street. So what we were able to do was designate one through lane specifically for cyclists. And that, that's what's being depicted here on the right with the signage, with the sharing of the road with cyclists. But now what's been different is there's a K rail that protects the cyclists from the construction as well as a delineators where, where it meets the vehicular traffic on Highway One, providing a, a safe buffer for cyclists during construction. That was a, that was a very important change. And I, I thank all the staff and folks that were involved in, in that, making that happen with, with Caltrans. Next slide, please. That was, that was it for me as far as our project. So we are going to be wrapping up the project. Hopefully in the next, hopefully by the end of summer, for this one, we have the long lead item for, for us is going to be the, the traffic signal poles themselves. They've been ordered even before the project broke ground. And there've been some COVID, COVID related delays. But so far we've been, there's been no indication of any issues with the shipping. So once we have those installed, that'll be one of the last pieces of construction. But folks can anticipate seeing some of those downtown walls being erected in the near future. And they'll start seeing some landscape work. And then the last piece will be the signal. I want to thank a couple of folks for that project that have been putting up with us. Cal Fire has been impacted. Their building's right there on the corner. They've been very helpful and been working with us on the immediate impacts of the construction. Also want to thank the Juicy Farms and the Juicy family for, and Post for being good neighbors to us. They are just adjacent to us on this project site. And I do want to thank them for being good neighbors and, and working with us on, as we, as we make changes and work through the construction. Half Moon Bay paving and grading also has their yard at the end. And they've been very kind and provided some constructive criticism on some of our traffic control. So I appreciate their, their work on that. Again, city staff and, and the very, within the various departments have been very helpful and supportive on this project. As well as our project manager Ray Rizavi, who's been helping this project move forward since, since 2016. That's it for that project. If I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you Maz for that great presentation. This is a fantastic project and I'm so glad to see it moving along. Looks like you're going to have a few weeks of really nice weather ahead, which I hope will help. And it's great to have a project that's 80% funded, over 80% funded by grants. So it's fantastic. Any other questions, comments from council members? Joaquin?
Yes. So I want to, you know, thank you for the great project. I also want to thank you for the adjustments that you made to the intersection at the end of South Main. We did have an incident and accident, nobody was seriously hurt. But thank you for making the detour to go out on Poplar and Seymour. That's a safer route for community to go into Highway One. And also want to thank you for making the bike lane. There was, I saw several close incidents. People riding their bicycles on the two lanes. So that adjustment, it's also, it's also a great adjustment. So thank you for that, for, for keeping our community safe.
Our pleasure. Thank you, council member.
Thanks, Joaquin. And thanks for members of the community for bringing those things to our attention. So we were able to respond. So it's great cooperation there. Any other questions or comments from council members? I don't see anything. No hands raised. Okay. Well, thank you again Maz. And thanks everyone for, draw to conclusion our city manager updates to council. We're now going to move on to our consent calendar. And yes, city manager, I think he wants your comment.
We do have two short updates that were not listed on the agenda.
Okay, great, great.
Todd Stevens up next is going to do a short update on the position of the remodel.
Great. All right. Welcome Todd. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Ruddock and honorable council members. I'll try and keep this short and sweet. I know you guys are trying to get through this meeting. I'm here to talk this evening about the recently completed kitchen remodel at the Ted Adcock Community Center. Next slide, please. A little brief history on the project. The remodel originated as a capital improvement project. FY19, FY20, in order to bring the kitchen up to modern standards, as well as bringing the kitchen up to code by upgrading the fire suppression system. We went out to bid with the project. Unfortunately, the bids came back significantly higher than what was budgeted for. With that, I discussed it with my maintenance staff and we determined that we had the bandwidth to do it in-house. Similar to the restroom remodels that we also did at the Ted Adcock Community Center. And we also figured at that time that we would be able to save a considerable amount of money for the city. So it was a no brainer for us to move forward at that point. We began the project in March of 2020, which was very unfortunate timing for all of us. We were locked down shortly thereafter the project began. So it took us a while to get, get ahead of this project. But we did, and we actually finished the project a couple of months ago. We'd just been waiting for the right time to come and give you guys this update. Next slide, please. So this is the funnest part of the job that my guys thoroughly enjoyed the most, and that is breaking everything that was existing in there. We did a complete demolition of every structure to include the fire suppression system that was already in place. The only thing that we were able to salvage was the refrigerator, which is still operational. So the refrigerator is still there and humming along today. The middle picture shows that we actually had to do some trenching ourselves. So we had to go in there and saw cut the flooring to add some additional drain lines so that we could get some nice features in there that I'll, that I'll show you later on. That was probably the most labor intensive part of the project. But, but I think when you see the result, I think it'll, it'll be evident that it was worth it. Next slide, please. So this is currently what the kitchen looks like. As you can see, there's a new custom range, a commercial dishwasher, which cycles in about 90 seconds and a all new modern fire suppression system to protect all the equipment that we have in there. Next slide, please. We have a custom kitchen, or excuse me, upgraded commercial sink, which also has a trap, a custom made trap on the end of it, so we can catch any bad stuff from going down the drain. And we also upgraded all of the lighting in there. I think we added 18 to 20 different can lights. So the place is lit very well. It, it looks very nice when you're inside there. The pictures honestly don't do it justice. Next slide, please. And we also had that beautiful custom table made in the middle. It's like a prep island with a vegetable washing station in it. There's an ice maker tucked in the corner and a hand washing station. And one of the other functions that we were able to repurpose the table that was in there. So if you're looking to the left of that picture, that is the roll up window that leads into the council chambers. So we were able to repurpose that wood and build a nice custom little serving area. So once we're able to get back in there and use it for functions, caterers or whatnot, we'll be able to fit their shafing dishes on there and be able to serve people using that, the larger room for, for their events. I just want to just point out that
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And so now we will have a brief, quick presentation on item one E.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just give a little context to the item before Ken starts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Benefit. And, and, and since we did get some questions about it. So, so typically threatened by law throughout the year, after the city council adopts a budget starting for fiscal year, July 1st through June 30th of each year. We come back with quarterly reports. First quarterly report, second quarterly report, third quarterly report. And they're always about probably five to six weeks lag after the end of each quarter. And typically the mid-year, the second quarter would be made possibly a more elaborate report. So a couple of comments I want to make. First, the report that's attached to your packet is different than what we've done for say, the past four or five years. Ken put this new, more user friendly report together, starting the first quarter of this year. You receive that first version in November of this year. And that's what's attached to your packet today. So it is more information than was provided previously. And I think once the council gets looked used to the report, it's a template. And it's Lisa and Ken's intention to use that report for each quarterly update. As I mentioned, typically at mid-year, depending on how we're doing, we possibly would come back with a fuller presentation and make recommendations for adjustments to the budget. Possible increases to certain capital projects, depending on how the books close. We're always waiting for the books to close at the end of December when we receive our audit. And so mid-year provides that opportunity. It's very typical for cities to do that. We were planning to do that on March 2nd. This one's on me. Our scheduling for your council meetings got out of whack a little bit and we had to push that item. So what happened was the, it did get separated. What's before you today on the consent calendar is the report, the quarterly report template that you'll get each quarter. But we were not prepared to make any recommendations tonight. So that then got picked to March 16th. So I just wanted to give that context before Ken makes his, his comments about the report that's in front of you tonight. And again, reminder that we will be preparing. He'll conclude at the end of his, his remarks that we'll be back on March 16th. And we will be making some recommendations to make some adjustments to the recommended budget. Ken?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ken.
All right. Thank you, Bob. So yes, this is just a very high level summary of what's in the report. I do want to go over just some quick terms and definitions. I know council knows this, but for the general public, the bottom line for governments is something called a fund balance. And that is a calculated balance of available money after you consider revenues and expenses. So a very simple explanation would be like a personal bank account. Say if someone was to look and say, oh, I have a thousand dollars, but you know, I have this bill coming and I paid on this day. Maybe I have 300. That new number is a fund balance. So what that means is, as you can imagine, during most times of the year, that number is estimated. And we don't know, as Bob mentioned, we don't know what that fund balance number is until six months after the fiscal year, which is in December. For the city of Half Moon Bay, our fund balances are separated into two categories. Reserves and are unassigned and are unassigned fund balances or undesignated fund balances. Those are amounts that are available for any Those are amounts that are available for any purpose that council council wishes. So the packet is a little bit more, has more to it. But that really is kind of the number that we kind of look forward to at the bottom, bottom line, as far as our financial health and our condition going forward. This table might look familiar. This is what we have in our budget books. This is what we have in our CAFR. This table's here to showcase what are, what we estimated our fund balances to be at different points in time. So at the adopted budget, which is back in June, late May, we we estimated that our first line that we would have about seven point three million. Now, that was a very hazy number. Thinking back to May, we had COVID, we have COVID, but it was the beginning of COVID. We weren't sure about how revenues were going to look. We didn't know what our expenditures were going to look like. We haven't closed our books, but we had to prepare a budget. So we put in a number, which at the time was considered a very conservative number. And we adopted a budget that left us with one hundred and twenty-three thousand. In the second column, at the end of first quarter, we learned a little bit more about, we had our bills come through, we had our revenues come through. And we came to council and said, we're looking pretty good right now. We probably, we don't know for sure, but come come towards the audit, we're probably floating around two point seven, maybe a little bit more. And then after the CAFR, after our audit, you can see that we can confirm that we have ten point six. We started the year at ten point six. That means we have three point three million that is available for council to use. In the packet, you will see that our revenues are tracking much better than what we had planned for, because we were so conservative in our forecasting, that through the process of mid-year, council had opportunity to review, get down a little bit more down into the reads about what's about T O T, sales tax, where we think we're going to land, kind of do our recalculations, do our re-estimate, do our more estimates, and figure out how to allocate. And then staff will come back with recommendations to allocate those monies. So very high level, three point three million is our unassigned balance confirmed from our audit as of the second quarter. Our financial outlook is much improved compared to June twenty twenty. And then staff will come back to council through the mid-year process to assign the unassigned monies. And with that, that was just a quick presentation, but I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Greatly appreciated. Any questions from council members?
This just clears up a lot of things for me, and it's a very positive outlook, and I appreciate your taking the time to explain for me and the public. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion from anyone to accept the quarterly financial report for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. Anybody?
I'll move for staff.
Thanks.
Second.
Great. Thank you for both. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Raubek?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That completes our consent calendar. We tonight have nothing on ordinances for our public hearings to consider. So I'll move on to item three on our agenda, resolutions and staff reports. And we will start with item three A, which is a consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county.
Mayor? I have to recuse myself on this item.
Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you.
I'm going to disappear now. Somebody text me when it's over, please.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Raubek, I'll send you a text when we're completed.
And just for the public, I'll just mention that Councilman Raubek is within five hundred feet of the of the hotel location, and therefore, under guidance from the F P P C, he's been recommended to recuse from this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Okay. So we'll start with a staff report, and then we will open this up for a public forum if we have any questions regarding after the staff report. So first, let's start with staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the presentation tonight. I do not have a PowerPoint. I think this is fairly straightforward, and I think we provided quite a bit of information in the staff report, so I'll make this presentation short. So the recommendation before you is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an M O U between the county and the city regarding the new homeless shelter program at the coast side inn. By way of background, late in twenty twenty, the city was notified by the county that it was pursuing acquisition originally of two hotels for the purposes of supporting homelessness during COVID and into the future. Through multiple public meetings that this council hosted, the county focused its efforts on the coast side inn, and in late December of twenty twenty, actually made the acquisition. Right around the same time, the county kicked off an interim program to begin using the hotel as housing for homeless individuals on the coast who were over sixty-five or otherwise had other complications that put them at risk of contracting and experiencing really severe impacts from COVID nineteen. So first of all, I just wanted to share that that interim program is well underway. They were able to work with Samaritan House located in San Mateo to create this program as an interim operator. And they currently have ten residents, all of whom are individuals who were homeless or lived in Half Moon Bay. Some of them were in hotels over the hill over the last couple of months, but were able to be brought back to the coast side. As as many of you know, our homeless community, most of them are from the coast and have connections to the coast. And like the rest of us, the coast is their home, and they're not interested in being relocated to a shelter or other facilities over the hill. And so the ability to offer this shelter opportunity for individuals here on the coast has really been great. The interim operator Samaritan House has been working closely with all of our local homeless service providers. We meet regularly to talk about issues and ideas and ways to expand services. And the outcomes have been incredible. I think it's unexpected. It's interesting what happens when, you know, individuals are dealing with a lot of issues in their lives, and their focus when living in an encampment or on the streets is really just about survival. And it's really hard to think about, you know, getting your social security card or your updated driver's license or I D, participating in a in a regular program to help you with substance abuse or mental health treatment. That's, those are things that, you know, are a complication for anybody. And when you're living on the street, it's 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 in the back of your mind because you're in survival mode. And when you move people into a safe space, a room of their own, that they can lock the door and their possessions are safe when they leave, the outcomes are incredible. And so I'm pleased to say that many of these individuals are making progress. They several have received housing vouchers, which is the most important step in getting into permanent housing and getting stabilized and hopefully eventually getting into housing that is unsubsidized because they're able to stabilize all areas of areas of their lives and provide for themselves. So we're really excited. There's lots of work to do, but this is great. During the public hearings at the end of last year, there were a lot of comments from the community and concerns. And following those meetings, Bob Nisbet, our city manager, worked really closely with Mike Callagie, the county manager, to talk about ways we could address these issues. And ultimately, we decided that an M O U would be a great way to identify these issues, come up with plans to resolve them, and commit as agencies to overcoming these issues. And so over the last couple of months, we've been working closely with county staff and city staff to negotiate the M O U that's attached to this agreement. There are several important sections in this M O U. I just wanted to highlight five key areas, six key areas that were identified during the public input process that are addressed by this M O U. The first, I think, and most important, was that the city and the community would be involved in the planning for and operation of of this facility. We know that the coast is a small, tight-knit community. We've, that's been demonstrated several times tonight. And we we want to work together to make sure that this not only serves as a great place for individuals that are experiencing homelessness, but is really a good fit for our community. And so through this M O U, there are commitments that the county, the city will be a participant in the R F P process for the long-term operator of the homeless services program there. We've already been issued a copy of the draft R F P that we're commenting on, and they hope to distribute shortly so that they can move that forward. We've also finalized planning for a community advisory committee, which will be several individuals from the coast. Identify and overcome issues that are of concern to the coast side and develop something we heard from the community, develop performance measures to really track the progress of the efforts there and make sure that the work there is reaping the benefits that we need to see from a facility like that and that the impacts on the community are mitigated to the best possible. The second thing we heard were concerns about this location's proximity to schools and other facilities, and how do we address that? So a couple of sections in this draft M O U address that. The first is an attachment. There are the rules and regulations that anyone living in this facility and participating in this program will have to follow. And, you know, what was really encouraging to me is when we met with a homeless focus group leading up to the acquisition, this was one of the areas that they identified as being really, really important because they want to be able to live in a safe and productive environment. And so having rules and being able to enforce those rules is really, really important to them and to the community. So a draft copy of those rules is attached, and I'm sure that those are rules and regulations that will evolve over time as we figure out better ways to serve this population in this facility. The second really important thing I think that's in this document is the screening. The county will screen potential participants in these programs on several levels, but the two most important, I think, are first, for sexual predator crimes. You know, if people are Megan's list, to, and that will preclude someone for participating at this time. The county just feels like that's the right step right now is to prevent, to not include anybody that's committed a a sexual crime, and especially anything involving children in this program. The other is to look at violent crimes. And being convicted of a violent crime will not necessarily preclude somebody from participation, but the county and its service provider will really look at that on a case-by-case basis to make sure that the people living in this facility are the kind of people that we want to have in our community and in an area that keeps people safe. Another thing we heard was a preference for locals, and the county has committed to that preference. All locals applying for this program who have gone through the county's coordinated entry system will be prioritized for the use of this facility. And there are enough of those individuals on the coast that I believe that will will fill this facility, and we'll have a very local-centric program here. Wraparound services is important to everybody, and the county is already showing good efforts in providing those services, mostly through local providers, which is really exceptional. You know, we have the Coastside Clinic and several services just across the highway and other great service providers through our core service providers and local nonprofits. And so I believe that as people are stabilized in this housing, those services available locally will will really see their efforts enhanced as people are able to focus on recovery. There was concerns about the financial loss to the city around transient occupancy tax as we convert this from a hotel into shelter and eventually affordable housing. This agreement does not get into specifics, but does confirm that the city and county agree that there needs to be mitigation of those lost revenues. And we're working closely with county staff on a separate agreement for that, and we've made a lot of progress. So we're looking forward to finalizing that and making sure the city has some of the costs we could, the the lost funds recouped for this. And then the last area is, you know, this long-term plan. What what will happen to this place? Will it always be a homeless shelter? And I think the hope for everybody is know that it won't be needed as a homeless shelter in the long term, that we'll see great progress, we'll we'll learn from it, other programs will come from it, and eventually, a large hotel like this will not be necessary as a shelter on the coast. And this agreement commits the county to pursuing a for permanent affordable housing at this location when the time comes that the services provided here are no longer necessary. So I'm happy to take any questions. I will also point out the version of the M O U that's attached is missing something that was added through our negotiations with the county in the insurance section, making sure that the city is also named as additional insured in any of its contracts for services here at this facility, which we thought was important. So that minor tweak has already been made and is in the final version of this. But I'm happy to take any questions on any other areas of that are addressed in this M O U. Bob Nisbet's also very well versed in this agreement, as is our city attorney, and appreciate you giving us the time tonight to share.
Thank you, Matthew, for that summary and the key elements. And by the way, thank you to, you know, all of staff for helping put together this memorandum of understanding. It's a very important document. It's a lot of work, and it reflects a lot of the input and concerns that we've had from the community. I think very effectively and even above and beyond some situations. So thank you so much. And are there any questions before I move on to public comment? Any questions from council? About the memorandum of understanding too? Nope. Okay. Open it up for public comments if there are any.
Mayor Karina Lebovitz will be first.
Good evening, everyone. So so many of you know me because we've sort of touched base on other things, but just for the record, I am, I live in Half Moon Bay. I'm a mother of a young son. We plan to send him to Hatch Elementary School. We live in the neighborhood, not within five you know, start by saying that and then move on to say how totally proud I am of the city for supporting this effort. It really shows me that this is the type of community that I want to be living in, and I want to be sort of demonstrating for my son the type of community that supports its members and lives these values as we move forward in times of crisis and of need. So I'm very pleased and to, like, for the city's support of this effort, and really appreciate it. So I have some questions about the M O U. Having said all that, I think the first one is whether or not the C A C, I don't know if that's how you abbreviate it, has been finalized. Do you have all the members of that already? It sounded like from the M O U, it sounded like perhaps you didn't, and the staff report sounded like perhaps you didn't, but listening to Matthew's comments, it sounded like maybe the membership was finalized. So I was curious about that. I was wondering if they were involved in the creation of the M O U. I know, and I can see that it reflects a lot of the comments that were received sort of earlier on. But I was wondering, you know, how much they were brought in as a part of this process to help think through some of the details. To that end, I was wondering a little bit about the performance requirements. I think that's an interesting concept, but I was noting that there aren't any sort of concepts or thoughts about repercussions for failing to meet the performance standard. So I was wondering what the thinking was there. Further, while I'm really glad to hear how well it's been going, I think we all agree that the wraparound services are going to be really critical to its continued success. And I think we all really want this project to succeed and and sort of show everybody, you know, what a what a great thing this can be. you know, what a what a great thing this can be for our community. And I was noting that I wasn't seeing anything very specific around the wraparound services in the MOU, so I was curious about that as well. And then finally, I was just going to note, because I think it's interesting, that when we talk about the priority program, it includes people really up and down the coast from Pacifica all the way down to the county line. And I thought that was interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your questions and comments. And let's see, do we just think how it works best? Would staff like to answer those questions first or take all the comments first?
There, there's, I see another hand raised.
I see another hand raised. Yeah, that's what I meant. Okay, we'll take all the other comments first, and then we'll circle back to those questions that Corinna raised. Thank you.
Aisha Barrow, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. This is Aisha Barrow. I wanted to also echo Karina's comments and commend you on the great job that you've done in alleviating the community's concerns and listening to the community in implementing this program. I think it's a source of great pride for me to live in a community like this and knowing that there already are 10 residents that have been benefiting from this with very little, you know, crime or adverse consequences is very reassuring. I did have a question. How can the community continue to help you in identifying individuals from the coast side that may qualify for this for this place? Because, you know, there are a lot of homeless people that may not be as visible. They may not be in an encampment, and you may not see them, you may not know about them. So how can we, as a community, help you do that? That's it. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly, if you'd like, make a stab at answering some of those questions we just heard. I think those were all good questions. I see Matthew nodding his head, so he can, he can make the first go at it. And if I have anything that comes to mind, I'll add after he's done.
Great, thank you. And those are good questions, and I apologize because some of them were just based on me not being completely clear. So I appreciate that feedback. And so the first question was about the community advisor committee. And and what I meant to say was that the planning for that committee is completed and but but we have not moved forward into soliciting interest or making selections. So it is still available. Keep an eye out. I expect we will probably make the application materials available towards the end of this week or early next week and make selections over the next couple of weeks and hopefully kick this off around March 1st or the beginning of March. And so if you're interested, please submit your interest. We want to have a diverse and representative task force that helps us really identify issues, identify opportunities, and work together to really make this a successful program here on the coast. So thank you for that question. So to that end, no, the advisory committee, since it has not been convened, was not involved in the drafting of the MOU. The MOU is an important step in allowing us to convene that community advisory committee in cooperation with the county. Speaking to performance measures, I think that'll be one of the initial tasks of the advisory committee as they start to convene and talk about the issues is identify metrics and areas that will help us understand where there's success and where there is room for improvement so that we can make adjustments, work with the county to make adjustments to the programming that takes place there and and get the best outcomes, both, as I said, for the participants and for the community. And and to your question about repercussions, you know, I think one thing that's clear is this MOU is about working together. You know, the county is autonomous and can do certain things in our community, and they've been really gracious and working with us and a great partner with us. And so this MOU helps to establish that partnership. It helps them to understand what our expectations are and helps us to commit to certain things to support them and their efforts here. And so the repercussions, I don't see the performance measures so much as as rules that have to be followed as much as areas that will identify issues so that there can be reaction and change and improvement. And Bob can probably speak more to that issue. To Aisha's point, yes, or actually, I think it was to Karina's point, Pacifica is included in the definition of coast in this agreement. What we're finding with homelessness is there's a lot of crossover between the homeless population in Pacifica and in the rest of the coast and many of the housing opportunities. I spoke earlier about the housing vouchers. And the what a housing voucher is, it's an opportunity for a person to receive support from from the government in pain for housing. But a landlord has to be willing to accept these vouchers and accept the some of the work that goes into working with the county to have someone live there and use one of these vouchers as payment. And unfortunately, there are not a lot of opportunities in Half Moon Bay right now and in the mid-coast to use these vouchers. So I'm going to put a plug out there. If you own property, if you have rental property and you want to make a difference in our community, reach out to the Department of Housing at San Mateo County and work with them on how you can become a landlord that accepts vouchers because that's what's going to help transition individuals into a better situation and continue to make progress in their lives and and be able to do it in their community. To the to that point, the city of Pacifica, there are more of those opportunities. And so a lot of people that are homeless here on the coast end up living permanently in Pacifica. And so this program needs to be able to help homeless individuals in Pacifica on that path as well. And so Pacifica will be represented in the population that is in the shelter. And then Ty, she's questions about how you can help. You know, the good thing is we have a lot of services here that work with the homeless population and refer those folks to the different service providers, Abundant Grace, the Hot Team, Coastside Hope, and our Sheriff's Office. You know, our Sheriff's Office staff interact with many individuals experiencing homelessness, and they're aware of how to get these people services and get them referred and are great partner in doing that through our Hot Team. That being said, if you if you come across somebody that you're concerned about, I would recommend you contact Abundant Grace or Coastside Hope and let them know, and they can help get these individuals connected to services, whether they're homeless or not. That's, you know, these are providers that provide a lot of services on the coast. So hopefully that answers your questions. Bob, anything else you wanted to share with the with the community on this?
You know, I would just add that once the advisory committee is stood up, that will also be a forum for community members to bring those individuals to our attention. That is, that is the purpose of the advisory committee. It is our intention that those meetings be public meetings. That that is the purpose of the advisory committee. The committee is the liaison between the community and the impacts on the community and the operation of this facility. So that would be the perfect forum for people to come to that meeting and and say to us and say to the committee, hey, I have some concern. I see an encampment developing in this certain area by my house. You know, do you think we can go take a look at that? So I think that will be a forum for that as well, and we'll act that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew and Bob. Any questions from council members? Joaquin?
It's not about questions. I have actually have a few, a few comments, and I would like to answer some of the questions that were asked. First of all, and I would like to say that I'm, I'm very proud of the Half Moon Bay community, you know, to take this to some of us, some could be a challenge. But I think this is giving us the opportunity to open up a homeless housing possibility for a community. I know that, you know, or economy has been affected by COVID, by losing the hotel. But I strongly, I strongly, I strongly believe, you know, that Half Moon Bay has a lot of great things coming to us, to our community. We have been very supportive of each other during these hard times. And yes, not forgetting about the need in our community. One of the things, you know, that makes Half Moon Bay great is that we get to know our neighbors. We become very supportive of each other. Yes, the destruction of this historic landmark, you know, in Half Moon Bay, the Andriadi, you know, farm, the barn, shows a lot of support for everybody. One of the questions that was asked, how can we help as a community member? How do we know about who is homeless in Half Moon Bay? You know, we do take, you know, the opportunity to get to know our community. I personally visit the the encampments in Half Moon Bay around the creek at least two times a week. I go, I have conversations with the homeless population, bring items that they might need, blankets, especially right now, jackets, I bring, you know, garbage bags that they want to, they actually, they are helping, you know, clean the the camps. Together with the abundant grace, they're doing great work, cleaning up the area, picking up the garbage. And we hope to provide a dumpster, you know, soon. Hopefully you can do that as soon as possible before more rain comes to our community and washes down the garbage, you know, down the creek. I do also visit and have conversations with all the homeless population that maybe we don't know about, but I do know about them. Some of them gather at the Magdutra Plaza during the afternoons after work. Same thing, I visit, I bring some of the items for them. And I'm, I'm very, you know, I'm very proud to say that I'm a member of the community of Half Moon Bay and to take, you know, initiatives like this, supporting the new initiative that we have, COVID, COSA Recovery, you know, initiative. And I do believe that we have great things coming to us. So I want to thank you, a great presentation. And please, if you have any questions for me about what kind of work, you know, we are doing, you know, to help our homeless population, you can always email me, approach me, you'll see me downtown. If you'd like to visit the areas, I will be happy to introduce you to some of our homeless population, you know? They, they do like visits, and they do have a lot of stories to tell. So, you know, so thank you for this.
Thank you, Joaquin, for sharing our experiences. Thank you for what you're doing out there for folks. Any other comments before I move on?
I just want to, our staff has been working really hard on this agreement with the county. And not just to get the paperwork done, but to take what they've heard from the community and apply it in this document and work very hard in negotiating with the county to come up with a document that reflects all the concerns we heard from the community. It is just a piece of paper. It reflects our commitment. There's going to be a lot of work ahead with the advisory committee and building some engagement and trust with the rest of the community. But I think it's a, it's a great project, and I think, you know, it's, it's our local service providers. By local, I mean, you know, here in Half Moon Bay and the coast side, but also in the county, that add, you know, real value to our community. We don't get value from Google and Microsoft and, you know, corporations. We get value from local service providers and local members in our community producing value for our community. So it's, it's a great investment. I think it's a great start, and we're going to be talking more about this in the next item as well. I'm pleased with how it's come together, and I just want to say thanks to staff and and thanks for the members of the community who've been remaining engaged and asking questions and sending emails, you know? It's, it's a great start. We have lots of volunteers already for the committee. You know, it's a good thing. Thanks also to Joaquin for sharing his perspective. It's valuable and appreciated.
Thanks, Debbie. You know, I think this will be a model program that, you know, we'll be proud of as we move along, and other communities will want to know, how do we do this? And we did this with you, you know? We're it. It's on our watch, our community, our staff, our council, and and I think that, you know, when people ask how they get more engagement, I think as, you know, we move through COVID and we really get this shelter going, a lot of people have already asked a lot, you know, can I volunteer at the show? I think there'll be a lot of opportunities to work with folks. And, you know, the more you get to humanize our assumptions and get to know people and make relationships, it will, you know, will be challenging a lot of assumptions that we make. I mean, just when I was listening to Joaquin speak, he said, yeah, you know, I go over at Magdutra Park, and, you know, that's where some folks congregate after they've been working all day. Well, you know, that challenges an assumption right there that, oh, you know, there's folks, yeah, they're working every day, but they don't have a home to go back to. So maybe they go to an encampment, maybe they go back to their car. But, you know, right there, you begin to get some, you know, I think people's minds shift. And, you know, what we're doing is we're bringing dignity to folks and we're saving lives. So anyway, to echo Debbie's comment, thanks to all, all of staff who've been working on this for quite some time, and I'm really positive about the vision for the future. Okay, so it is time for a break.
Really, Robert?
Yes, sorry.
I apologize, but we do need action from the council on this.
Yeah, yes, we do. Thank you. My bad.
Well, that's, when I don't have a slide up, you know, that's, it's easy to forget. So our recommendation.
Move down to the very minimum, so you all have to participate on this one.
Yes, we have a, yes, there's a motion about adopting a resolution. Would anyone like to read it, or I can make the motion?
I move the staff recommendation.
Good.
All right.
Councilmember Heemanis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone.
Yes.
Bush and Carey.
All right. My apologies for getting ahead of myself. Thank you, Matthew, for reminding me. All right, we're a little off from our nine o'clock hour, but as I said, last meeting, we will always try and have a little break here after being on it for two hours. I'll give a chance for councilmember Arback to rejoin us. So how about we come back at nine twenty? Okay, all right. Yeah, it's seven minutes. I figured what the heck, just in case. All right. Nine twenty, everybody. See you back at nine. Everyone for waiting and I think we can bring the meeting back to order if everyone's ready. Okay. We are now still on resolutions and staff reports. And we're going to move on to item three D. Community Services Financial Assistance Program, and we will have a start with a staff report.
Evening, Mayor Brownstone, members of council. Happy to be here with you tonight. My name is Victor Iton. I'm the Community Services Analyst for the City Manager's Office, and I'll be sharing my screen. And I'll be sharing my screen for this presentation. Sorry, Jessica, I don't seem to have a, oh, there it is. Yeah, never mind. Okay, can y'all see that?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So again, as I mentioned, I'm here tonight to present on the Community Services Financial Assistance Grant Program. And that's a mouthful, so I'll be referring it, referring to it as CSFA. So I don't have to say that every single time. And starting with a little bit of background, the CSFA Grant Program was first piloted in fiscal year 2018, 2019. And it was initially started with the purpose of supporting important services and programs that serve the community. For that first year, fifteen local nonprofits were funded at varying levels for a total funding amount of $129,000. The city council elected to continue the program in fiscal year 2019, 2020, based on the success of the pilot program. And that year, fifteen organizations were again funded at a higher level of $150,000. Then for this, this, this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, 21. Just as we were getting ready to roll out the program, COVID hit. So with, with the impacts of COVID being felt very early on. The city council subcommittee for the CSFA program and the city council ultimately made the decision to focus funding for this fiscal year specifically on projects and programs that were providing COVID-19 relief services. And also due to the nature of pandemic and everything this year. Instead of going through its usual application and selection process. The subcommittee and the council made the decision to instead select a few select nonprofits that were already well established, well established in the neighborhood or in that community. And that we're already providing a lot of these relief and support services to the community. So for fiscal year 2020, 21, seven nonprofits were funded at a level of $200,000, which is the highest funding amount. But the council felt it was necessary to help alleviate the effects of the COVID pandemic. Now, if the council were to elect to continue this program for the upcoming fiscal year, this year would be the fourth, fourth year of the program. And typically, in, in previous years, as part of the funding agreements, each grant recipient has had to submit a mid-year report and an end of year report and meet certain goals throughout the year. Now, for this last fiscal year, due to being quite different and to give organizations a bit more flexibility and discretion in how they use that funding in addressing COVID-19 issues. We did not set specific goals for each organization, but instead of just having a mid-year report due, we did ask organizations to submit quarterly reports. So the first one was due in October, the second one was due in January. So we're at the mid-year now, we're still calling it the mid-year. And then the next one will be due in April and the final one, the end of year, we do in June. And so here tonight, partly to give you a mid-year check-in on how these organizations are doing. And at the mid-year, all seven of the funding organizations report they have been able to continue and in several cases, expand their services related to COVID-19 relief and recovery, which is great. And all of these organizations, as expected, have reported an increased need across the board. But thankfully, they have been able to, for the most part, meet those needs, thanks in part to the CSFA grants as well as, I'm sure, many other funding sources and grants that they've been able to, to gather throughout the community. And I've cleared a few highlights here. This is just a very small snapshot of what these organizations are doing. And I, because we only have seven this year, I did include one for each organization, so I'll be going through them briefly. Coastside Hope, as the core services agency for the mid-coast, provides a variety of services and has been able to continue its critical family needs safety net services, which include, you know, food services, shelter, rental assistance, utility assistance, and others. ALS has been able to continue providing its Saturday food pantries and food delivery services, which helps hundreds of people in the community. And they've been having their food pantry every single Saturday since, I think, the second to last Saturday in April. Up until now, only missing a select few Saturdays during the holidays. Some recesses dental health was able to purchase a good amount of additional PPE and sanitizing equipment to safely continue dental care services. They, they provide services to a lot of our uninsured residents here on the, in the coast. And both senior coasters and Coastside Health Center received grants this year. And they've been able to continue providing a lot of essential services to seniors who in many cases, unfortunately, are isolated during this pandemic. They were provided meal deliveries, virtual programming, safe distance visits, and a lot of other services to them. Benning Grace Coastside Worker, which works a lot with the homeless community here on the coast, as mentioned in the last report. Has been doing a lot of COVID-19 education, providing masks, hand sanitizer, and other services as well. And last but not least, the Boys and Girls Club of the Coast Side has been able to assist some of our middle and high school students in supporting them in their distance learning, which has not been easy on, on many, but they've been able to provide, you know, stable distance cohorts. Some on school campuses and some in our very own Ted Adcock Community Center. And I've seen them, they're all in a corner, they're able to get their work done, which they might not be able to do at home, which is great. And of course, of course, with highlights, and especially in this year, these organizations are really feeling a lot of challenges in providing services, challenges mainly brought on by the pandemic. And some of those include seeing increases in mental health crises and cases. Members of the community unfortunately are dealing with a lot of stress and oftentimes, unfortunately, again, grief brought on by many of the effects of the pandemic. So that's, that's a major challenge. They've definitely been seeing increases in clients being affected financially due to temporary job loss, accumulation of debt, or in some cases, permanent job loss. They've also felt challenges in, in education around COVID-19, both the virus and now with the vaccine, and stopping the spread of misinformation and myths. So a lot of them are working on that. You know, kind of tied with, with financial impacts, they've also seen an increase needed for food and other services. And again, as I mentioned previously, seniors facing isolation and associated emotional mental health effects. And I know I mentioned it for some recess dental health, but not just for them, but I would say across the board, they've all seen expenses increase for PPE and, and other sanitizing equipment as they continue their services. Now, with that mid-year update, now we look forward to this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, 2022. And for this upcoming fiscal year, staff does recommend the continuation of the program with a funding amount, a recommended funding amount between $150,000 to $200,000. And that's in line with funding amounts that have been allocated to this program in prior years. Due to the continued impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, staff also recommends that funding continue to be provided for organizations and programs specifically providing COVID-19 relief and support services. And some of the recommended areas of focus include services related to food insecurity, housing insecurity, and mental health treatment services, again, especially related to the impacts of COVID-19. Staff also recommends utilizing, utilizing the city council's CSFA Subcommittee to work with staff on refining selection criteria for this year, reviewing applications, and developing a final, final funding recommendation for this year's applicants. And here we have a proposed timeline for this year, keeping in line with, with prior years. We're proposing that grant applications open, of course, at the end of March. We give organizations about six weeks to complete those applications, where they can do at the end of April. Applications would then be reviewed by staff and the CSFA Subcommittee throughout most of May. As I mentioned previously, the end of year reports are due on June 11. And at that time, we'll be able to include some of that information into the presentation to the city council on June 15. Where the CSFA Subcommittee recommendation will be presented to the council. And the council will then make a final selection of grant recipients for fiscal year 2021, 22. And then throughout early July and August, staff would work with those selected organizations to finalize the funding agreements and on the distribution of funds. So our recommendation for today is again to receive an update on the fiscal year 2020, 21 cycle of the CSFA Grant Program and to provide staff direction for fiscal year 2021, 22. And with that, be happy to take any questions or go back to any slides that you'd like to see again. Sorry, Mayor Brownstone, I think you're muted.
Thank you, Victor, for that report. Appreciate that. And maybe just keep the timeline up. Remember the amounts that you had. Yeah, that's great. Any questions before we see if there's any public comments and questions, any questions to Victor? And council members?
I don't know if it's exactly a question, but there's a good likelihood, if you're an optimist, that the American Recovery Program that President Biden is proposing could result in more than a million dollars to Half Moon Bay for COVID relief. So I would propose that if that happens, we use a good deal of that money to increase the amount for this program, which I think is highly worthy of it, something to keep in mind.
Point. Thanks, Harriet. And we could obviously always reopen things. Well, one, we hope things get better, but we don't know if things may get worse. Surges, who knows? And, and we do hope that we might see some of that government money. We did note that there was also some state money that might be available from the last $900 billion plan, especially from the Department of Agriculture, which might be able to provide some money for pantries. And we're actually already looking into that with our state senator. And there, and there, that's Josh Becker and his Coastside Rep to help us track if some of that money has been drawn into the state and if it's starting to cascade down to the county level. So we can get our input, we can get our asks in early for some of that regarding, especially for food programs, which a number of these programs actually provide already. So it would be within the criteria for that kind of money as well. Any other thoughts? Do we have any questions from the public?
I don't have any hands raised at the moment, Mayor.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I just have one procedural item on, on this, on behalf of Councilmember Jimenez. He did ask me, prior to tonight's meeting, we talked about the fact that he is employed by ALS, which did receive a grant last year. And, you know, potentially would be in the pool of grant applications for this year. And we, we reviewed the rules regarding participation. And I advised him that he, he could in fact participate in this meeting because I didn't see any reasonably foreseeable financial impact on, on the Councilwoman Jimenez's salary or on ALS, given the fact that it would be speculative at this point to determine whether there would be one. Moreover, staff recommendation is to broaden this up widely to, you know, to nonprofits in general. And so he would also be covered by the, another exception where decisions affect the public generally. That said, if, you know, if ALS were to apply, then it would be, you know, potentially a Councilwoman Jimenez would not be able to participate in the June council meeting regarding selection. But we'll cross that road and we get there. But I did just want to make that point on the record that we did have that discussion. And I, I recommended that he would be able to participate this evening.
Great.
Mayor Brownstone, I do have a hand raised now.
Great.
Belinda, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to thank you, you know, Mayor and City Council community. I wanted to say thank you on behalf of ALS for the support that you've given our community. Especially during this critical time, we've been able to really wrap our arms around the community during a crisis because of the city of Half Moon Bay. Also, so many giving community members and other folk have really helped to put us on the front lines to be able to give support, but especially for the funding that was given through the city. It's been really impactful because of the food pantry that we've been able to do and the mental health services. And I will say that at the end of the year, we were hoping that the numbers would decrease on both ends, but both our mental health services, we have a waiting list right now. And also the food pantry, we're serving 200 on Saturdays every week, which we've calculated about an average of four to five in a family is, um, close to 1,000 people that we're reaching. And city of Half. Victor Gaetan, especially because Victor started with us on day one to be out there every Saturday, helping us with the City of Half Moon Bay Library. Thank you, Annie, and all of the team of the library that's also pitched in. And then City of Half Moon Bay staff now that are coming out to just help us manage. And it's just been really tremendous. So I want to say thank you to all and to the city for making this possible and to our community members and the Coastside community for all your support. It has really been tremendous act of love and we're grateful.
Well, thank you, Belinda, and thank you to everyone working over at ALS, who's doing incredible work. And word of your work goes way beyond our borders. So hopefully more and more folks will become engaged and supporting ALS. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's Matt, too. He's been there helping advocate all of us. And of course, to City Manager and each of you. And so thank you. And of course, it's a thank you to Councilman Jimenez that's been helping our farm workers.
Any other hands raised?
There are none, no.
Okay. So back to council for conversation. So one question is, let's see, between 150 and 200,000 funding level, I, any, any thoughts about that before I?
I would certainly support 200,000 currently with the understanding that if there's additional state or federal money that comes to the city, that we increase to 200,000 appropriately. That's where I'm standing.
Great. Does anyone disagree with that? No, right? I don't think so. Good. All right. Yeah, I feel exactly the same. And, um, and we're always taking a look at our budget, too. You know, we'll see where our budget's at, regardless of whether we do get that extra help, we can always make the decision. Because I think the need is only increasing. So, good. We reserve our right. Now, in terms of further direction, everyone was okay with that timeline? Because what, next thing, you know, that'll happen is we'll take the grant applications again, which will go, and we have a subcommittee, which will pre-sort, screen through those and come back to council recommendations. And that timeline looked reasonable to everyone? Any, any thoughts on that? Or the process yet there?
I don't have a comment about the timeline. I think the timeline looks fine. I think it's pretty much reflected.
I, I don't have a comment about the timeline. I think the timeline looks fine. I think it's pretty much reflects mirrors what we did last year. I, I do like the priorities as, um, characterized by staff. Looking at the list of folks who got grants in the current fiscal year. I mean, it looks like all seven of those groups. You know, are meeting really needs. So I, I don't think I would want to rule out, you know, helping seniors. I mean, they're isolated, there's really big need. And also, you know, students needing, you know, remote. Digital support is very important as well. I'm guessing people will be going back to school, but. Seems to me that. That's kind of important too. So I, I don't want the categories to be too narrow. I mean, certainly food, housing, mental health are top of mind. But, um. I see the needs as reflected in the, the groups that received funds this year. I'll just leave it at that.
Agreed. Well, does, does staff feel that has enough guidance then at this point?
I do. Matthew, um, you didn't intend to have a vote on this, received direction to go with 200,000, the same amount as last year. Open it up and put out a request for applications using the three criteria, but worded in a way. That other, uh, all applications would be reviewed and, and we would, and have the subcommittee review those. Are, are we clear? Do we need anything additional? Matthew, Victor? Nope. Thumbs up.
Okay. All right. So we have now. Completed our resolutions. And staff reports. And we will move on to, um, commission and committee updates. If there are any.
Do you have any this time?
I don't think so, right? Uh, items for future discussion, possible agenda items. Okay.
I would just like to note that, um, the review had an obituary for Juan Blackwell. This week, who passed away. And, uh, I, I just wanted to call attention to that because. He was actually quite well known about town. Yeah, he's a true Happen Bay character. You know, did volunteer work. Organized connections among the homeless and others. Yeah, he was a good fellow. And, uh, you know, I, I think he'll be missed, you know, he. He was a Happen Bay character. So rest in peace, Juan Blackwell.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
I glass to Juan Blackwell.
The council could adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory and then we would send a certificate to his family if he'd like.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Terrific. Sounds great. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
We will do that. Any city council reports? No city council reports. Well. Look at that, line 45. Well, thanks for, yeah, thanks everyone for, um, moving us along. Thanks to staff. Thanks for the great reports. And. I move that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Juan Blackwell this evening. Thank you all. Thanks for members of the community for joining us this evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.